Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Baum. Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Dr. Fellow. Dr. Mann.
Present.
Ms. Wa.
Present.
Mr. Soto.
Okay, is there any public comment on closed session agenda items which are Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointments, Vice President Administrative Services, Vice President Educational Services, Vice President Human Resources, Vice President Information Technology, Vice President Student Services, and General Counsel? Also, Government Code Section 54957.6 Negotiation with Representative Employee Superintendent President Designated Negotiators, William Thompson and Mary Dowell. Anybody wishing to address the Board on either of the closed session items? None appearing, we shall adjourn to the closed session, be back in open session at six o'clock this evening.
Yes, it's definitely.
All right, the Board of Trustees is back in open session. There is one item of reportable action that is on the agenda and will be dealt with at that time, and that is AMF. Do you do the pledge of allegiance? Let me ask Ms. Ashley Jackson if she would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes, meeting number thirteen, the regular business meeting of June fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. Are there any additions, corrections, or questions about the minutes? Could someone make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Wa, seconded by Mr. Soto. Any questions? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Okay, introduction of guests. Anybody have guests to be introduced?
We will in a moment.
Announcements and recognition, Board of Trustees. Ms. Brown, any?
I have none today.
Dr. Mann?
No.
Mr. Martin?
None, thank you.
Soto?
None.
Wa? The one thing I would say is that I went to the annual meeting of the Pasadena Educational Foundation last week, and one of the items on the agenda, and also a little presentation about, was the middle school robotics competition that was held at Pasadena City College. And there were just, everyone was very, very pleased with the way that that went. Particular kudos given to Doug Haines and to Bob Miller for their good work in making it happen from the Pasadena Educational Foundation's perspective. They would love to come back next year and do it here, and it just went very, very well. So, very, very positive comments about PCC and the environment, et cetera, so, very well done.
Mr. Thompson, I didn't have an announcement, but if possible, I would like to give maybe a two-second report.
Please, absolutely.
Which I would not consider as an announcement. I just wanted to report that I did attend the meeting of the Little Hoover Commission on June twenty-second. There were about thirteen trustees there, plus several guests who sat on the side, and the questions that they asked us were focused on governance and student success. And I did receive a summary of the comments, which they will then put in a report. I think everyone thought it was a very constructive meeting. The Little Hoover Commission, I actually read their report from two thousand and two, and they made four really excellent recommendations on governance, all of which the legislature ignored. And so, you know, what I mainly said-
Why is that unsurprising?
You know, if you would just reinforce this, like strengthen the chancellor's office, you know, et cetera, if you would just reinforce, just repeat these and get someone to pay attention to them, that would be something. So, I don't, I guess ten years ago, they did ask trustees to participate in this, but I thought it was a very, very positive and helpful meeting.
Dr. Rocha, any announcements, recognitions, etc.?
I do, thank you very much, President Thompson. Just a quick segue, since you mentioned Dean Doug Haines, I did want to mention that the first day of summer school class, I stopped in and Doug and was starting up our Power Academy. Doug, you know, I know you didn't prepare a speech, but could you just briefly shout out what the Power Academy is all about, because it's a great, great new program and partnership?
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. It's been in works for a while to try to train inner, not inner-city, but members of our city electrical replacements, if you want to say, their grain population, much like most of the trades. And we had an opportunity to come along to take our general electricity, two forty-eight A through D series, which is a certificate course within the program, and if you want to say, supercharge it in relations with the City of Pasadena Department of Water and Power, and also their public works. They need replacements, they need apprenticeships, they need ongoing training. So, we started this relationship with guest speakers. There were two of their trucks here on campus, students had a chance to see their employees. Couple of their employees were trained here, of course, and gave testimonials. Students had a chance to interface with them. Every week during the summer, we would have a guest speaker or a tour to see the opportunities within the city and how students can apply for and eventually possibly be hired on by the city. I traveled today, got a call today, didn't have a chance from the City of Monrovia, said they're interested in looking at some partnerships, so, small step, but I'm looking forward to working with it. Thank you.
What's the percentage of water and power employees of the City of Pasadena eligible for retirement?
Really not sure on that.
Pretty high, I think.
Yeah, it's pretty high. They're turning over as, you know, they're moving on. And then the new technologies, you really can't trade some of the older techs and some of the modern equipment, because the gaps are very huge, you know? You say digital, and they're just like, it's not, it's not in their vocabulary where the new students jump it and take it on, and smart grid technology you've heard that were interfaced, and power generation, understanding solar. Two of the employees from Water and Power who were at the opening said, "How do we get involved in your solar program?" So, a little recruitment on the side, and that was really great for us. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Doug. You know, I just wanted to let the trustees know and the public know what the college is doing in career tech education to create training for true middle-class jobs. So, very, very proud of this new program. The second thing I have, I want to throw it to Vice President Jackie Jacobs, who will present or introduce to you our new athletic director and new football coach, and I throw it over to Jackie.
Thank you, President Rocha. And I am delighted to introduce the two special, very special people. I'll have the athletic director come forward, and then you introduce the football coach. We feel we are quite blessed to have this person, because he's not only has had a lot of experience, you can come over to the mic, has had a lot of experience in the athletic world, but he's a commissioner, and athletic commissioner, and so, he will keep us out of trouble, he's going to put us on track, and he will keep us safe, so, we'll be in good shape. So, thank you so much for coming. Tell us just a little about where you've been and your background.
Maybe we should start with his name.
And your name.
Oh, it's John Woods. I'm sorry, I'm so excited about him.
Well, I'm very happy to be here. I've been on the job for the last two weeks or so, and have had an opportunity to knock on some doors and visit with a lot of folks, and I can tell you without reservation, this is a great institution. The fact that you have thirty-some thousand students on one side is a real challenge. I was at Palomar for thirty-five years, started as a wrestling coach, and then moved into athletic administration my last twenty-one years. And I can say, we were facility poor at Palomar. Our football team played off-site. We had the Dome Gymnasium, which was built in the fifties. It was a engineering project that was allegedly supposed to be very efficient, but it was everything but. It was one hundred and twenty degrees in the summer, and it was twenty degrees in the winter, and we couldn't heat it or ventilate it. So, when I saw the position here at Pasadena City College come available, I started going over your website and navigated through everything, and the first thing that struck me was your facilities and athletics. You've made a tremendous commitment to your student athletes. More impressive than anything is the athletic zone, your academic support area. It is the best I've ever seen, and I thought we had a pretty good one. So, you've done a wonderful job at developing the facilities for your student athletes, and we only hope that they can measure up to that commitment, and anything I can do hopefully to influence that, we certainly will. So, I'm really happy to be here, and I hope that you will say that after one year when I'm ten years finished. So, what I'd like to do is introduce your new football coach, Fred Fimbres. He comes to us from DuPage College in Chicago. He was there five years, but he is truly a Southern California native. He attended Cerritos College, played football at Cerritos, and ended up in the beginning of his career coaching at Cerritos, and coached, I want to say, twelve or fourteen years in the community college system before moving to DuPage. I think we're very fortunate to have him. He's going to do a great job. He's committed to community college athletes, which I'm also committed to. I think that's our first commitment to students in our community and our neighboring high schools, and we're going to work very aggressively to get them here. So, this is Fred Fimbres, our head football coach.
Thank you. I'm honored and excited to be here. I was, feel blessed to have the opportunity to lead some young men and help them grow and create a group of young people that will make this institution proud, that will represent the institution, the community more importantly, and themselves in a positive light. Having been a product of California Community College, having competed against and coached against the Lancers, I know the tradition here, and I've paid attention from a distance, but I've paid close attention to the things that have gone on over time, and I feel very excited about what we're going to do here and how we will make all of you proud. I look forward to hopefully meeting every one of you in person and having a moment to visit with you and share any ideas or take any feedback that you may have. But I promise you this, we will work ferociously every single day to make you proud in the community, in the classroom, and then strangely enough, you'll see how we can win football games as a byproduct of doing things the right way. So, we're going to bring the PCC proud tradition of athletics, particularly in football, to the forefront, and we're going to have a group of young people that represent, strangely enough, the community at a community college, and we're going to make you proud and compete viciously, and we're going to create some nice young men who will represent us well. So, I thank you very much, and I truly am honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you here, both of you.
And, thank you, Vice President Jacobs. Okay, why don't we just welcome these two guys?
Yeah.
It's too hot to work in pads out there, so, the last-
I'm wondering why he brought the Chicago weather with him.
The last item that I have, very briefly, President Thompson, is just an expression of gratitude, especially today, I am wearing the pin of the classified staff, which is not to exclude by any means my management colleagues or my faculty colleagues, because they know how deeply grateful I am. But I wore the pin today because this is a significant week as we transition from last week, we had so many retirements, and this week, we move into a new year, and our staff, those who are here, I thank you sincerely, and those, for the record, out there who are working while we speak to keep the college running, keep summer class going, get fall registration going. So, I just wanted to say for the record to thank everyone, especially on the classified staff, who is working so hard in the service of the college. So, thank you, President Thompson.
Okay, we now come to shared governance representatives. We'll begin with Ms. Chapman.
Thank you, nothing this evening.
Dr. Jacobs, anything further?
No, thank you.
Dr. Van Pelt?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Just a quick comment, I wanted to thank President Thompson for his compliments of Doug and I for the robotics competition, but I think it really is important to point out that there is a number of college personnel in the area of administrative services and facilities and what have you that made this a success. It was truly a college effort, and I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. I also wanted to say, for whatever it's worth at the moment, that both our new athletic director and our football coach are just stellar hires. I've had an opportunity to work with the athletic director just recently, and again, just met the football coach, and I think there is a new dawn, a new day dawning, if you will, and I'm looking forward to helping with in a number of areas in terms of enrollment issues for our student athletes. And then again, I think as Dr. Rocha mentioned, as you'll see when you see the board report, item four P, there's a lot of changes that we've had to put into place to prepare the institution for the transition that we are undergoing right now. And if it really wasn't for the efforts of all of our staff and our managers and some of our faculty, we would not be able to get through eighty-seven or eighty-eight retirees. So, what you see here in four P, for example, is some of the changes that are necessary in order for us to continue to do the business that we need to do for the institution, and they represent temporary adjustments in order for us to move forward. But it's all because people are willing to step up and to do the work that's needed to deal with the thirty-plus thousand students that we have. So, it's a great place to work, it really is, and there are great people here.
Well, thank you. Ms. Colberus?
No report.
Dr. Douglas?
No report.
Mr. Martinez?
Just a brief report. First of all, the Academic Senate Board will have no meetings until the fall semester. So, I just want to let you know that over the course of the summer, the Senate officers and I will be working on the following. Number one, a recommendation for the CNI Committee on the Awarding of Credits for CLEP, that's the College Level Equivalency Program. We believe that this will be particularly advantageous for veterans. Number two, a revised policy on prerequisites based on content review, although we're waiting on a model from CCLC that will take us forward on that issue. A new policy on equivalency, which is the process by which we determine that individual applicants or how individual applicants can qualify for faculty positions when they do not meet minimum standards. A new policy on sustainability, and possible revised updates on the policies on program discontinuance, student conduct, and academic integrity, and finally, enrollment priorities. So, we'll be here and actively working over the summer.
Very good. Ms. Jackson, congratulations, welcome to your first meeting with us.
Thank you. I'd also like to take this time out to introduce the new two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve Associated Students Board, if they could stand up, please. Starting from my left, Monshin Chow, the new Vice President for Public Relations; Hannah Israel, the new Vice President for Sustainability; Simon Fraser, our Chief Justice; Christopher Fennessy, our new Vice President for Academic Affairs; Daniel Pareja, our new Vice President for Internal Affairs; John Fraser, our new Vice President for External Affairs; Logan Thomas, our new Vice President for Campus Activities; Erica Barazza, our new Vice President for Student Services; and Victor Vasquez, our new Vice President for Cultural Diversity. We're actually missing one of our members, Daniela Rueta, our Vice President for Business Affairs. She's actually away in Spain on a summer abroad program, but she sends her regards, and I think I can speak for the entire Associated Students Board when I say that we're really excited to be here, and we hope we have a great year. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Congratulations to all of you, we're welcome you. Look forward to working with you. You may sit down now. Okay, public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody wishing to address the Board on a non-agenda item? Approval of consent items. Page three, we have ten items. Are there any that should be addressed separately? Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would like to call seven B and four P for a separate vote.
Hi. I would like to ask some questions just about two P in general.
Two P?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Others to be dealt with separately? Okay, is there a motion to approve the other items?
Move to approve the others.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved by Dr. Mann, seconded by Mr. Soto, approve all except items seven B, two P, and four P. Any questions or discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, Dr. Mann?
On seven, seven B, I would like to vote separately on this because there's the authorization for the funding for the videotaping, the board meetings for the next year, and since I am strongly opposed to spending money on this, I would want to vote separately, because I will vote against it.
Okay, we are in a situation here where both Vice President Baum and Trustee Fellow, who voted for it, are away. Could we perhaps get a courtesy vote from one of you?
What's the time sensitivity?
Well, the guys are here tonight.
Well, they're here, I mean, we, I think we need the contract approved, do we not to be able to pay them and move on? So, if we could have a courtesy vote from one of you, I mean, there's no question, I don't think that both Mr. Fellow and Mr. Baum would, or Dr. Fellow and Mr. Baum would support this.
I know. I have to put you on the spot.
You did.
So, what do you want, Phil? You want someone to move?
Yes, please.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
This is very hard.
No, it's not.
Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's raise our hands here. All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, all opposed? All right, we'll put it back on the agenda on the twentieth of this month, unless one of you is willing to cast a courtesy vote recognizing what Mr. Baum and Dr. Fellow would do were they here.
Mr. Thompson, I normally might consider that, but I feel very strongly about this. I don't think that when we looked at the number of people that was watching this video, that it weren't spending this much money on when we have a perfectly fine, well-working audio cast.
Okay, we'll put it back on the agenda on the twentieth of this month, our next meeting. The next item was two P, Ms. Wa.
I have some questions regarding the process. There were a number of positions, and there were quite a few salary class and step jumps, and I'm not sure what the process was, if, I'm not sure of what the process is, why some positions jumped so many steps, and then I also had a question was on the people who are recommended for these increases in salary, steps, and class changes, were they, was it an interview process, or they just were already doing, were they in the position?
Okay, first of all, thank you, Trustee Wa, for the question. With respect, we're looking at item two P with various change of statuses, and without speaking individually to, you know, some of the changes, I would say, first of all, all of these changes that were recommended by the previous incumbents, in this case, either Vice President Wilcox, I think, for most of these, of course, Vice President Jacobs is here for the instruction, and they have followed, these are not arbitrary or discretionary moves, and there was a, an internal but quick process. These are all temporary positions, as you see, these are not permanent positions, and will exist until they are filled permanently. When they are filled permanently, we will follow the hiring process to ensure that any qualified individual, both inside and outside the college, will have an opportunity to compete for the positions, and the position, and the individuals who are named here understand fully that that's the case, that these are temporary positions. With respect to the various details of their rating, these go according to very clear, strict, nondiscretionary salary scales that are already established for classified staff and for classified supervisors. And I would, at this point, turn to Dean Engeldinger, but he is in parts unknown. For the interim between now and the time that we have new leadership in HR, I've asked Dr. Van Pelt to serve as Acting Vice President of HR, and so I would turn to him to elaborate and offer any kind of additional information in terms of the process we used in order to get this information on the docket.
And there are a number of different situations that exist here. Some of them are fairly routine, so Leslie Tirapelli, by way of example, is already the interim Director of Distance Education, though her permanent job is librarian, but this is an extension through June of next year. Similarly, Gary Woods is the interim Division Dean for Business and Computer Technology. So, each one of these is somewhat different. In the case of the two managers that are involved, the person who is the dean, the Associate Dean of Admissions and Records retired, and previous to that, Stuart Wilcox was doing both the job of Vice President of Student Learning Services, as well as the Associate Dean of Admissions and Records, so he was doing two jobs. Upon his departure and the incumbent's departure, that really created two full vacancies. So, in this case, Deana Chase was, and I believe that in his transition plan, Stuart had an extensive process within the organization to come up with ways of filling the gaps on an interim basis. So, basically, what Deana did is to go from her current position, and she, you know, doing the transfers and so forth, has interaction with the records, admissions and records in any event. So, that turned out to be a reasonable fit, and upon Kathleen Rodarte's retirement, Denise Carter was similarly tasked with doing that job. So, what happens is that the difference in pay is relatively nominal, and I think it's, you know, measured in, on the order of probably a couple thousand dollars a month, thereabouts, give or take, versus the full pay of hiring. So, what it allows us to do is to go through and actually- So, what it allows us to do is to go through and actually operate in the intervening time until we, we have a, the permanent organization in place, which means that the new Vice President for Student Learning Services, and then, you know, whatever changes to the organization need to be made, and then you go out and fly the position on a, on a full fly, meaning outside candidates and everyone else would apply for the job. To the extent that these people applied and were successful, of course, they would continue and otherwise they would retreat back to their existing positions. So, does that answer the question?
Somewhat. So, just to be clear then, on, so the examples that you used on Denise Carter and Deana Chase, the, the differences between the M6 and M3, M5, M1, how is that determined?
That's done on a, on a computer model basis. And it's essentially, certain factors are entered in, and then the, the dollar number is, is produced by the, by the model. And, you know, like I said, the, the net difference in pay turns out to be on the order of $2,000 a month, give or take. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it's on that neighborhood.
So, it's not done by the lowest step to that, that particular new classification? Is that?
The management pay structure is not done on, on the traditional step and column basis. It's done on the basis of, first of all, the category, M1 through M7. And then, secondly, with the number of years the person's been in the position, educational background and so forth. So, there, there's a rubric involved. And in answering the rubric questions, then, then the number is output.
So, that process then is clear and well-known?
Yes.
By everyone? Okay.
Maybe well-known, but I don't think it's very clear.
Well, it wasn't clear to me, which is why.
Dave, is it clear to managers what the process is?
Yeah, the management, the, the members of the Management Association have had multiple presentations, actually several years ago, about the nature and structure of the, of the Management Compensation Plan.
Okay, so the process is transparent to them, so the people who, who know, who should know?
Yeah, in fact, the entire Management Compensation Plan was designed to be not subjective, to be objective in it. So, it's based on, the, the job has a position based on years of experience, based on, you know, years of service for the college and education and so on.
Okay, I just want to be sure the process is transparent. And then regarding the interim, so even though we hired the new VPs, these positions may still then roll over, they just won't be interim. So, whoever the VP is may appoint them permanently, so we'll still have?
No. The new Vice President has an opportunity to retain them during the, the flying process and during, you know, the process of getting acquainted. But it is not possible for these to be permanent positions without an, an external fly.
Okay, and so, at the time that the VPs come into place, then, what sort of the length of time that we expect to continue an interim position?
Well, these ones go through until next June or when filled. So, it could be two months, it could be three months, it could be four months. It's, as soon as the Vice President determines the organization and understands what the needs are, then they go out and they, they would fly the position.
Okay, so to be clear though, for me, just if a VP comes in, we would not expect that they would hold over an interim position for an additional six months?
Well, we would not expect, so I'm not, I don't know the answer to that question. So, in other words, if you take the example, for example, of, well, for example, let's take interim Assistant Dean Extended Opportunity Programs and Services. We have always had that management position, okay? The person who had that position just retired. So, we're just, by mutual consent and by policy, as, as you've heard, we are asking someone to fill the stopgap on a temporary basis. That person is doing so, and in most cases, doing that job plus the job they had, okay? Now, when the new Vice President of Student Services is appointed, that person, like any of the current Vice Presidents, like Vice President Jacobs, has done with three of these actions today, continued to make assessments and will make an assessment as to whether the position, not the person, but whether the position will continue. Now, I should say, I won't prejudge that, but I should say that it's highly likely that the position of Dean of EOPNS and the position of Dean of Admissions are going to continue, but I won't prejudge that. If the Vice President and, and I recommend to the Board of Trustees that those positions continue, those individuals who inhabit the position would have to, if they chose to continue the position, in that, that position, would have to compete for the job in the normal management search process that we use according to standing, written board policy. So, I think I'm saying what I've said is so. And I think I, I've been fairly well-schooled on this because of all, you know, I've observed and approved all of these, these actions. So, is that helpful? So, in, in these cases, at least the ones that are on 2P, these are pretty, as Rick said, standard positions that the college has always had. And then I, I doubt, but again, without prejudging, I doubt whether the college is going to recommend that those positions go away because of one way or another, the service needs to be provided to the students for both admissions and for EOPNS. EOPNS is, is, by the way, the Educational Opportunity Program for underrepresented students.
Ms. Martin? Did, did you want a motion on 2P or did you want?
Well, let Linda, I want to make sure Linda's through with her.
I just had one other question, well, just to follow up then to what Dr. Rocha was saying. So, you know, one of the, the rationale that we all used when the board voted to approve the VPs was that we were flattening out administration overall. So, I just, and I understand that you need to wait for the VPs to get here so that you can decide what that actually looks like. But I just want to be sure that we all get a clear picture then of what that flattened structure looks like and what the, the salary savings actually is.
You are minutes away from that report, that Vice President Van Pelt will report the total booked-up administrative savings. I want to say absolutely clearly, absolutely clearly for the record, that the, the expenses for administration and staff in the 11, 12 year will be, with all of these changes and all to come, will be significantly, significantly in the millions of dollars less next year than this year. Okay? And I want to be, you know, that's been our North Star, and Rick will fill that in. So, I, I thank you for your helpful questions and your opportunity for me to, to clarify that.
Thank you.
Other questions on 2P? Dr. Mann?
Yes, I, I do have a, I do have a question. There, maybe, maybe Dr. Douglas can answer this. There is a, there is a procedure that the board has approved for interim management appointments. Was that procedure followed in these, in making these recommendations, filling these positions?
And I think that it was, but, you know, the truth is that this was done in a transition plan with Dr. Wilcox. And the internal process within Student Learning Services, I believe he, he did. And maybe Dr. Rocha knows better than I do.
Well, the management, the management, the policy on management positions is not limited to internal people. It's supposed to be, I'm sure it's supposed to be campus-wide.
There is an emergency hire provision within that policy that gives the Superintendent and President the right to invoke emergency hires. And in the process of the transition, in the executive committee decisions or discussions that we had, that was, that was the determination. But you're, you're absolutely right, there is a hiring policy. In fact, Dean Colross and I were looking at that today for another position within the Institutional Planning Office that we're looking at. And we are going to go the other route, which is the full post internally and fly, et cetera, route. But given the emergency nature of the transition and the speed in which all this happened, that's the method that was used for these.
Yeah.
And that's in the policy.
The policy provides that. And again, what you're seeing here are only two of dozens of vacant positions that were left vacant last Friday, many of which we are not filling. And I suppose the most conventional, and I appreciate the question, Vice President Jacobs could tell you that, for example, with her transition plan, and three of her, you know, appointments are in here, that we've worked that through the system for some month or so, so.
If I might, but the reason I raise this is I think the, the whole point of that management policy was to give opportunities, I mean, first of all, to be, to be transparent, but also to give opportunities for everyone on campus who might be interested to at least, you know, apply. And sometimes when we do this, someone comes forward from a completely different area who turns out to be excellent. So, I can understand this is, is a, or may be an emergency, but I would hope that we would provide all of our employees with as many opportunities as possible to advance, even if just to take a position for six months so they have the, the experience and they apply for another position, they can.
Absolutely.
No, I think we're in complete agreement on that. In fact, the most likely scenario, trustee Mann, is that, again, well, admissions is the classic one, okay? Admissions is the classic position where you literally have to keep the store open, okay? So, so we have somebody in there. As soon as we have appointed a new Vice President of Student Services, the position may continue, but that person, in keeping of what you said, would shift out of an emergency, keep the store open, you know, for the next 60 days mode, to a fly the position for the rest of the year and open it to all comers. Although I would say, and that all of this, you know, came through me, that when I spoke with Vice President Jacobs, retired Vice President Wilcox, that we went over this, you know, person by person to make sure that there was no one who was being, you know, not considered. So, was that, is that fair enough?
Exactly. Yes, we followed that process. And we even told some of them that as early as September or October, we're going to start looking and advertising for the real position, the permanent position.
Dr. Mann?
I'd like to just make one final comment on this and then the questions I'm going to raise on 4P. These are questions only about the process. I've known many of these people, I think these are outstanding employees. It's, it's just that the process I'm questioning, not the individual appointments.
Is there a motion to approve 2P? Second?
Second.
And move in a second, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on then to 4P. There's a revised agenda item that's been handed out to us. Dr. Mann, I believe you were the one with questions on this?
Yes, I, I have, I have a couple of questions on 4P, and I'll look at the revised, and maybe if we're lucky, those questions are answered. No, they aren't. On 4P, on the second page of 4P, and again, these, this question is, is for the process only. Most of these are positions going, which are interim, where people go in as an interim position. Are there new appointments, like Elizabeth Porter is being appointed as an evaluator? I mean, her time was being, is being reduced. But, for example, Cynthia Smith, who is moving from Administrative Assistant 1 to Administrative Assistant 2, this apparently is not an interim position, but it's a regular position. And my question is, did this go through the regular process for filling a position? I mean, was this position flown and made available to anyone who was interested in applying?
No, and in this case, Cindy Smith's job, her job is not up for filling. What happened is that her job stays as her job. However, a great many more duties were added onto it as a result of the necessities within fiscal of having both Sherry and Odessa combined, holding four positions, leave. So, what happens is that in this case, it's not a, it's not a fly position. She doesn't have to compete for her own job. What I did is in, in assigning a number of additional duties and responsibilities to the task, and then in looking at the appropriate position, the Administrative Assistant 2 is the appropriate position. So, otherwise, what would happen is if we flew the position internally, then we could be in a, in a remarkable position of having her not be the successful candidate. So, that's not the process in terms of a new position that has to be filled. This isn't.
Okay, but we do have a process, and this, this goes to the other position, the questions I have, which is on another page about the position review. It's my understanding, we do have a process for reviewing positions. And I'm not sure what it is. It used to be we brought in an outside consultant, people could apply for a classification review. And I'm assuming these other two, this position review, went through this process. That's one of my questions. So, my question here is, who made this determination? Why didn't this go through our regular classification? If these are, if these are temporary duties, then wouldn't this be a temporary position? And again, I'm not questioning the person at all, I'm questioning the process. I mean, is it, you know, I was a manager at a, in one of the Cal States. I might, you know, put a, give up two jobs to one of my employees, but I couldn't then move them from one position to the next. I had to then go to Human Resources. There was a whole process where an expert in classification came in and reviewed it. So, my question is, how did this, how did this happen? Was this based on your judgment, on Mr. Engeldinger's judgment? How did it happen?
There are two parts of that. In the first place, the position review, and there are two people in position review. Those tend to be the positions to where they morphed over time, and the job description and, and the duties actually don't bear as much relationship with each other as they should. And then what happens is that the individual requests a position review. They go through the process. Typically, the process is that the incumbent will go through and elaborate on the reasons why the position description no longer matches the position. Then it goes to the supervisor, manager, typically the Vice President, Human Resources. There are discussions that occur back and forth among the group. Then there's a determination that's made as far as, you know, whether, whether the position should be adjusted and there should be a reclassification, and then the extent to which it occurs. In the past...
And who makes that determination?
Well, in this case, the determination's actually made by the President upon a recommendation of the Dean of Human Resources. That process has always taken place that way. However, we have had in the past a consultant who provided his opinion as an advisory opinion then to the President. But in all cases, it was the President's determination on that.
So, these positions here, that says position review, the two position review, did these two positions go through that process?
They went through the process, and again, I wasn't involved in this, but my understanding is that it went through the entire process. There was not an outside consultant, but it was done among the employee, the supervisors, managers, Vice President, and then the President.
Okay.
I think Mr. Martinez can tell you the details of one. Judy Benson's the Secretary.
I can speak to the position review for Judy Benson. She's the Secretary for the Academic Senate, and we did indeed make use of the appropriate evaluation forms. The other Senate officers and I reevaluated her duties, wrote those up in the evaluation form and process, and submitted those to Human Resources and got the approval that went on to Dr. Rocha.
So, for these two positions, from what I heard, is this, these followed our normal process, except we did not bring in the out, they weren't reviewed by an outside consultant? Is that, is that correct? Or were they reviewed, or do you know?
I don't believe they were reviewed by an outside consultant, no, and I don't believe they have to be. That was done as a, I think as a methodology of objectivity, but in this case, I think that there was sufficient discussion among the people, that there was an agreement.
Okay, I have no question, but now let's go back to the person moving from Administrative Assistant 1 and 2. Did this go through the regular process? Were the forms filled out? Was there this kind of discussion and everything?
No, and, and that's not a position, a position review in this case, because what happened in this case is that other duties were specifically assigned that fit another description. The position review is a process where the, the job is changed over time, and then the person, the job that the person was hired in no longer fits. In this case, the person was reassigned into another job. So, that determination and that recommendation is mine, and it's mine here, that, that is the appropriate position in looking at the two jobs and considering the, the permanent tasks and responsibilities that have now been added.
Okay, I, I have, I have problems with this. I, I think we did not, there was, there is a real clear process for this. I think that it was not followed. I mean, I under, I heard what you said, that the, the person was assigned to another position with more responsibilities, but actually, I think that happens all the time, all over campus, and people still have to go through the, through the process. So, I, I am going to vote against this simply because of my concern again of the process. Again, this has nothing to do with the person in the position. has nothing to do with the person in the position, who I think is excellent employee and a very loyal and faithful employee, but I, I think we need to follow our own processes.
Is there, I'm not clear, is there, in fact, a, a process to be followed that applies to this situation?
Not that I'm aware of.
Dr. Jacob?
It's a classical reclassification, in my opinion. When a person, more, more responsibilities are assigned to position, could have happened to the, the, you know, the academic senate president. She could have this position, and then suddenly, maybe something that, that is, you might have added, to use in a ridiculous, an example, you might have added advising of student athletes to that position. Very unlikely. That would then, that would have to go through a reclassification process. That is a reclassification, and that's why the process I think it should go through, in my opinion. You know what I would like to do, if, if maybe, I.
Since, why don't, what I'm thinking is, I want to be, first of all, I appreciate the, the questioning, and we want to, and I assure you, we want to be absolutely scrupulous in making sure that any position that we fill for any reason, or any personnel change has, has had a, an open process. And in recommending it to you, I, I can do that, and I do that with, you know, full-heartedly and strongly. Having said that, okay, and taking responsibility that with the, the crush of business that we've had in the last two weeks of vacating so many positions, and literally, I know, for example, this, when it came to me to sign, and I was made aware of the process that was used, that Rick just described, it seemed to me an eminently reasonable thing to approve and to forward to the board. And having said that, you know, if it's the board's pleasure, since we want to make sure that we have the, you know, the, the right process that leads to the right outcome, I'm perfectly open to taking this back so that we can re-clarify the process and bring it back on July 20th, if that's the, that's the board's pleasure. I, I do think, in either event, we will continue to ask Cindy to do the, ask respectfully, to do the extra work that has been assigned to her.
What I'm trying to find out is, is, is there in place a, a board policy that governs this, or any policy, or anything in writing that, that governs what happens in a situation like this? Or is this something else?
Well, here, you know, maybe I, I turn to General Counsel Dow. Again, these matters are matters of contract. These are contractual matters. The, the whole issue of assignment, the issue of reclassification, the issue of movement within the workforce, these are all covered under contract. So, when we make a move, including this one, we make sure that it squares with the existing contract. So.
Yeah, I, if I may, President Thompson, members of the board, Dr. Rocha, I have been listening very carefully to this, and I want the members of the board and everyone else to understand that I have no previous information or background about this particular personnel matter at all. But I want to echo Dr. Rocha's suggestion that this particular piece be pulled, or Dr. Mann's suggestion that this piece be pulled off the agenda, so it can be reviewed and brought back to you at the next board meeting. This, it happens to be, it's a confidential position, so it would not be controlled by any applicable collective bargaining agreement that would apply otherwise to the administrative assistant positions. Whether there is or is not a board policy, I'm not familiar with, but I think that this is something that, that your staff and I need to have an opportunity to discuss, and we can bring it back at the next board meeting with a better explanation for you.
Is that applied, and just to the one position here?
Yes, it does, Mr. Thompson. To the, to the, again, to the very sketchy information that I have about the position reviews, those were, those did follow a conventional position review process. As Dr. Van Pelt said, there is nothing in the education code or your policies that requires that there be a consultant that review it. Rather, there need to be an examination by your Human Resources Office in consultation with supervisors of the position, where there's been an application for position review and reclassification. It's my information that that did happen in both of these cases, and these are appropriately before you and, and can be acted on by you.
Okay, Dr. Mann, any other questions, or?
No, that's, those are my questions.
Okay, so, as I understand correctly, then what we're being recommended is that we do not act this evening upon the change of position for Cynthia Smith.
Yes.
But the rest of these matters are before us, we can't act upon them. Is there a motion to approve this item absent the one for Cynthia Smith?
I'm so moved.
Second.
And move in seconded, any discussion, further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I believe that takes care of the consent items, which brings us, I think, back on the agenda to item F. Superintendent President, contract amendment, discussion with possible action. The, the issues here really are the extension of one-year term on the contract with no change in salary or compensation for that. There is a moving allowance provided for, $15,000, a one-time lump sum payment. The board and the Superintendent President agree that community relations and college advancement duties can be fulfilled more effectively if the Superintendent President resides in the district. And so, it's to enable him to move his, himself and his family into the district. The payments made upon the close of escrow or completion of a lease of property within the district, the lease has to be of a years, at least one year's duration. And the only other change in here is for change in paragraph 15C for termination without cause. The existing contract has a payment for six months, or the unexpired term of the contract, whichever is less. That would be changed to 12 months, or whichever is, unexpired term of the contract, whichever is less. So, with those changes, is there a motion to approve the amended employment agreement effective as of July 6, 2011?
So moved.
Okay, move by Ms. Brown, seconded, I think by Mr. Martin. Any discussion? Questions? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This brings us now to, where are we here? The item dealing with facilities planning for the U building programs. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. I'll ask Vice President Van Pelt to come forward. What Dr. Van Pelt is going to present is the up-to-the-minute informative, an update on everything having to do with the U building and the impending evacuation of the U building. We have, we are near, we are at the end of a, an internal process of consultation in which we have started from, as we did last year, from the premise that the U building needed to be evacuated as a result of not conforming to the current earthquake code. Given that, we had to relocate, or make a plan for relocating primarily three units. The sciences, under Dean Douglas, the health sciences, under Dean Freund, and the Health Center, the Student Health Center. Those three units had to go someplace else, and then, of course, there's, if you will, a domino effect. So, this will give you where we are with that, and is informative, not, not for approval, but as an update of where the administration is planning to go in terms of seeing to the, moving out of the U building and the relocation of these units, and the resulting dominos that fall as, as a result of all those moves. So, with, with that, I give it to, to Rick.
There's nothing else to say.
There were some details here.
I did narrative, and I did a, a chart to show, and I think that that's probably in your, in your pocket, or maybe not. This all begins in trying to maximize the, the space that we have on the campus and to utilize it as efficiently as we can. And while they're not necessarily all directly related, indirectly they certainly are. So, Information Technology Services is combining Computing Services with Management Information Systems. That is in process now of moving into the first floor of the library, both where KPCC and where Media Center were. So, that process is, is heavily underway now. Now, what that does is it creates a suite of offices that becomes open in the C Building, that Public Relations can move from the library, the very same area that Information Technology Services is moving into, to move into the first floor of the C Building. Student Health Center moves from the first floor of the U building to the first floor of the D building, where Computing Services was in a computer lab. So, by taking those two suites out, then Health Center can move in from the first floor of the U building. Natural Sciences Division, which is basically the third and fourth floor of the U building, has to wait until we can do the public bid for the acquisition of the portable classrooms and labs. That's expected to occur during the fall sometime, so if we were able to move during the latter part of the fall or during the winter intercession, then that would take care of the Natural Sciences Division. And that planning's been pretty complete with architects and so forth, so it's about ready to go out to public bid. Extended Instruction, which is the Lanes area, needs to move out in order to move a computer lab back in for, for student use, which is the one that needs to come out in order to make room for the Student Health Center. Health Sciences Division is really in several spots, most notably the R Building and the U Building first and second floors. They will move, that the U building occupants will move to CEC. And so, what's happened at CEC is that the classrooms have been carved out, and by compressing and better utilizing the available space, more hours of the day, there's a spare capacity that's created. And that planning is, is complete now as well, with the exception of the radiological technology, which requires additional engineering and so forth. But that process is about to begin. They need three portables on the, which we just approved tonight on the purchasing side, for offices for the Health Sciences Division. So, those will go in the parking lot to the north of the building on PCC property. CEC is compressing, as I said, and we, we need to acquire four portables, three for the high school adult program, and the GED program, and one for apparel skills. Those will go in the same parking lot, so we'll have a grand total of, and then there needs to be one for foster care as well, which is a grant requirement. So, that we'll have a total of five portables for the CEC, total of eight portables, and then we'll also add a restroom building. Computer lab, I mentioned, for the Learning Assistance Center. Trio Program is about to move. The carpeting was going in today, so that's the upward-bound classic and upward-bound math, as well as the PASS. And then Cal Works is having to move from the second floor of the U building into the L Building in a spot previously held by PASS. And then there's one other one, too, which is the, the foundation, and the foundation, which isn't included here, it's kind of a tertiary or oblique effect. They need to move out, we really need to solve a problem that we have with the International Student Program, and by, by having the foundation move out of the second floor of the D building, then we can create a space right across the hallway from where international students now are, and, and I think that we can help solve that problem as well. So, we're working on that. So, and then the chart shows it more graphically in terms of precisely what I've laid out and the timelines involved. So, the last one will be the Science Village in Parking Lot 5A for the Natural Sciences Division.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I have a, I have a question. I've looked at the chart, but I must have missed it. Where's the foundation going?
Well, we haven't solved that yet.
Oh, okay. I heard they need to move out, period.
Right. That much we do, because there's just not space on the campus, and, you know, we're trying to use every closet that we can.
Have you considered the, one of the houses across the street?
That is one of the options.
Ms. Wa?
I know the restacks are not always ideal for everyone, but I was just wondering, you know, I had a chance to tour the campus, and I saw the apparel group, and they had all those big sewing machines, but you're moving them into portable. So, were any of the programs adversely affected by the move? I mean, did they, do they have this close to the same amount of space or sufficient space, and was scheduling of any of the classes adversely affected by the restacks?
I don't think that the scheduling, well, I, I guess that depends on who the, who the student is, whether they prefer a certain hour, but by and large, it's a matter of utilizing the spaces as efficiently as we can. The CEC has little usage in the afternoons and on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays, so there is spare capacity. Now, by filling those slots, we think that we're going to better be able to serve the students. In terms of apparel skills, the tables might not be as large, but I believe that Dean Hodge has worked it out to where the number of students who were previously served will be served again.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sola?
Just a quick question about the Student Health Center. Seeing here that it's being moved, obviously, to the D building, is there adequate space there, just to provide services to students? Was that looked at, and?
Yeah, there is a very comprehensive program with Kent Yamauchi and with Joe Buschko and her staff, that was extremely exhaustive with, with different options and so forth. It's actually a far superior space to what they now have. It's more efficient, it's actually larger, they can accommodate more students and serve them better.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much. I think you get to stay right there and move on to the next item, which is the State and College Budget Update. This should be exciting.
Thank you, President Thompson. I won't give Dr. Van Pelt a long introduction this time, only to say that, as, as we all know, the state of California has a budget that has been signed by Governor Brown. And based on that, we have asked Dr. Van Pelt to present a basic informative on what the effect of that is on our budget for 1112. This is, again, not a budget for approval, but this is just an informative of what the effect of the signed budget is on our planning for 1112, and at a later date, probably, you know, in accordance with law, in September, we will be presenting to you a detailed, line-by-line budget for adoption in, for the 1112 fiscal year, so.
So, the budget was signed, I think it was signed on June the 29th, and the Budget Act needs to now be interpreted by various different staffs. On August the 17th, the district will find out from the Chancellor's office what our apportionment expectation should be, what the workloads are and so forth. In the meantime, the, the league has put out their estimates of what the impacts on PCC will be. And what you'll see in the upper-left corner is that our goal is $7.57 million, which is the conservative number that, that the league has put out for PCC. We will find out what that number really is, like I said, in about six weeks, when the staff has digested it and is ready to present to, to the entire system. Now, with that number in mind, and it's, it's sort of mid-range of what we were expecting, we're expecting basically between about $6 and $10 million. So, this is, you know, about halfway in between, more on the low end. The retirement incentive, and this was presented before, is the savings of $3.14 million. That's year one savings, the savings the following year. The savings the following year are, of course, zero. So we, all those savings were front-loaded. The non-filling of positions is twofold. One is actually not filling positions through a freeze, at least a partial freeze. But secondly, it's also the delayed effect of not filling the position July the 1st. So if it's filled August the 1st, or September the 1st, or December the 1st, those savings are then wrapped up. So this is an estimate because of that, because we don't know exactly. But I went through and calculated out what a reasonable number was, and I think that that's a safe number, is $2.5 million. So together, you know, that's $5.64 million of the $7.57 that we need. Optimization of the sections, $1.5 million, brings us to about a half million dollars away from where we need to be. And you'll see that it does include adding critical sections, and it also means that we will meet the legislated workload reduction. The league is estimating that we will lose funding for 1,691 full-time equivalent students through the Budget Act. And the reduction of $1.5 million would take that into account. That leaves a balance of about a half million dollars that would need to be found in order to reach the goal. And the revenue enhancement portion, and it's a matter of gearing up, we will have a year now in order to gear these things up so that we can cover the $3.14 million in the out year. Because that's a one-time savings now, we actually have to do some of these things. And it does take planning and it takes significant amount of work, for example, to add F-1 visa students or the distance education, the online overseas education and so forth, along with some of these reductions, like the energy reduction and technology and so forth. So it does give us one year in order to affect these efficiencies for the next fiscal year. So, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there questions of Dr. Van Pelt? Dr. Mann?
Well, first of all, let me compliment you. I think this is clear, easy to read, transparent. Anyone can figure it out. Even Dr. Rocha and I are both English majors, right?
That's why I made him do it.
But I do have a question. Optimizing sections, if our workload reduction is 1691 FTEs, does this mean we're going to have fewer sections or not?
Well, I think that what's possible is to have fewer sections serving larger groups of students. It's possible to do it through distance education. I mean, there are other ways of doing it. But ultimately, I think that it's a matter of, you know, it talks about low enrolled sections, of reducing those, but simultaneously adding the critical sections. But ultimately, you know, to reduce 1,691 full-time equivalent students does require some work. So the, you know, the $1.5 million estimated reduction means that we wouldn't take out of our coffers the education of each one of those students.
Which is what we have been doing, is that correct?
Which is what we have been doing.
Should say, just in addition, I'm very, very grateful to Vice President Jacobs, because she worked with all of the deans on a very difficult task of beginning to prioritize sections. So one of the things that Chancellor Scott has consistently advised is that not all sections are created equal. And so the answer to whether core general education sections needed for transfer and CTE programs are going to be cut, the answer is no. The, whether some sections in programs that are, according to Chancellor Scott, less priority, which, by the way, the priorities are transfer, CTE, and basic skills. So thanks to the very difficult work that the deans and Vice President Jacobs have done, they have taken the, you know, done the priorities and taken, if you will, the lowest priorities out. So as we've said consistently, that the effect on continuing students will be next to nil. We will, of course, face a situation in the fall when many more students than we can serve will try, will be admitted, and we'll be able to find no section, no matter what we do. But we're dealing with that. The budget, as Rick is presenting it to you for one and all, these are, these are not soft numbers. These are hard numbers. The adopted budget that we'll present will be within a farthing of these numbers that you see here. So I think our budget for 1112 is set. As Rick has suggested, though, we do have a year, and we'll use the entire year to have open and transparent consultation based on the Edmaster Plan and our major priorities of how we continue to serve the many more students who, you know, want to, want our classes, continue to serve them as efficiently as possible. And so I know that's longer than your direct question, but I wanted to elaborate that.
Could I have another question?
Yes, please.
This is more of a comment, but it's a question, because I just want to make sure that I understand this. In looking at this, I don't see anything about furloughs, about layoffs, about reducing number of staff. The staff reductions we have have been, you might say, voluntary. People have either taken early retirement or have left for some other reason, and their position has not been filled. But we have not taken any action to either reduce people's positions or to eliminate people, positions that people are in. Is that correct?
That's absolutely true.
I think that's wonderful. And I think you've done a great job on this, Rick, really, really. Dr. Van Pelt.
Other questions or comments? You're getting off very easy. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is future board meeting dates. Wednesday, July 20th, regular business meeting at 6 o'clock in the evening. And then Wednesday, August 3rd of this year, regular business meeting at 6 o'clock in the evening. Closed session for both will begin probably at 5 o'clock, but stay tuned for updates on that.
Mr. Martin, I won't be here for the July 20th meeting.
Okay.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
What ever happened to the meetings in the community? Have we changed that?
Just for the summer, I think. You can correct me if you're, just for the summer.
I'm sorry, Trustee Brown.
She wondered about what happened to the community meetings, the study session we were having.
Oh, yeah, I was just about to go on to that. So thank you for setting that up. I just wanted, as a, an FYI, and to raise to the members' attention, the schedule, as our next scheduled meeting, of course, is a regular business meeting on July 20th. Our next scheduled meeting after that is a regular business meeting on August 3rd. One of the things that I'll speak to the officers about is whether we will have a second meeting in August, because oftentimes we do not have a second meeting in August. I also had raised earlier to President Thompson the issue of the board retreat, and so, which we are going to try and put in for a Saturday sometime in August or September. The, after that, Trustee Brown, we will, our goal is to get to the study sessions with the September, with the beginning of the September round. So our first regular business meeting is on September 7th, Wednesday, September 7th. And then our first study session to start the year will be on September 21st. Trustee Wa has requested, and we've been working on the study session for Area 5 in South Pasadena. We haven't made a stop over there yet. And I've spoken to other members, including Trustee Martin. So we will be scheduling, so then we will return to our usual pattern, usual, of the first meeting being a regular business meeting, and the second meeting being a study session wherever the members decide to have that. The only other thing that I would, and again, this is not a set date, but we just spoke about the budget, and it may be necessary. Rick, could you explain the timing of the budget and why it might be necessary in September to call a special meeting?
We only find out what our apportionment is August the 17th, and the budget is due to be approved by law, middle of September by the board. So that would leave basically one board meeting in early September. And the question is how quickly the budget can be put together in those few weeks.
Right. So we're going to try for September 7th for the adopted budget. And we just wanted to flag that to your attention. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, we haven't had a study session in District 2. And so I would like for us to consider maybe meeting in all the districts before we go back to where we've been before. And I would like to, for us to consider having a study session in Sierra Madre, which is part of District 2, and which I think kind of feels disenfranchised or cut off or something. So I would like for us to really consider having maybe the October session, or maybe the September session, if you're not too far down the road, because I think we have met. And didn't we meet once in Ms. Wa's?
San Marino, yes.
In San Marino. So as I said, I think we should meet in all the districts before we start repeating.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration, and I'm sure you have some discussions about it. Future agenda items? Anybody have anything for the future agenda items? Okay, if not, anything else? Then we are adjourned.